Is that 1,071 years?
1,071 years. Good evening. Welcome to the May 10th, 2022, meeting of the Ware County Board of Education. We appreciate all of you coming out tonight and being with us. At this time, we will open our meeting with an invocation by Mr. Joe G. Medis, and a pledge of allegiance from Mr. Denton Dial. Would you all rise, please?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, your mercy. We're thankful for everyone in this room. Lord, we're thankful for our educators and what they mean to the county and to the students of this community. Now, Father, we pray that everything that we say and do tonight would be pleasing to you. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Could you say the pledge along with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we will approve the agenda. You have the agenda before you.
Let me share that one correction on the personnel. Was that... did we... there wasn't a correction, was there?
And we added two people.
Is it on there? Okay. Last night, last night, well, there's the two for the day. Okay.
Are they on our...
They're on the... okay, they're pucks. Okay. There are two in the... when we get to it, there are additions to the personnel report, but I'll mention those when we get to it.
Okay. All right. Any other comments about the agenda? All right. This time, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Some moves.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Etheridge, second by Mr. Dial. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we have a public comment that we would like to... Mr. Miller, would you please come forward? While Mr. Miller's coming forward, I'll list the policy of the Board of Education. We have a statement we read before all public comments, so I'm going to read this at this time, Mr. Miller, if you'd just bear with me. Okay. The Ware County Board of Education welcomes and encourages citizens to be involved in attendance meetings. As part of its general operating procedure, the Board offers an opportunity for Ware County residents, businesses, organizations, or school system employees to address the Board at its regular monthly meeting. The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public pursuant to the guidelines outlined in policy BCBI, and not for immediate responses by the Board to the public comments presented. To be placed on the agenda, individuals who request to appear before the Board must notify the superintendent's office in writing by completing the public participation request form and submit it at least 24 hours prior to the regular monthly meeting of the Board. The request must state clearly the topic or issues to be addressed. Each person whose name is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make comments. Where several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the group should designate a spokesperson. The Board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual Board members or Board employees. The Board will take comments and questions under advisement until there has been time for the superintendent to look into the matter. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. My name's Butch Miller. I'm representing the Hill-Mott International Bill Fitz Association. This started about sometime last fall. Last fall, we were... a couple of us were at a football game, the playoff games, and all of a sudden, they asked to pledge allegiance, and so I turned around and started looking, and I finally... I remember what the flag was back in the corner over there, and I said, "Boy, this would be nice if we had a bigger flag." I think that flag's approximately 30 feet high, maybe 35 feet at most. But anyway, our club would like to make a proposal to the Board of Education to spearhead an effort to replace the flagpole at our expense. We're going to try to raise money with the community and hopefully get the kids to participate so they can say they were part of it. But we'd like to put a flagpole somewhere in the nature of about 100 foot that we will pay for and supply a couple of flags to get y'all started. So the flag would be about 30, 30 by 60. And it'd be probably the one we're looking at, maybe 100-foot flagpole. And that flag, that flag, just when it lays down, is 70 feet. It'll be 30 feet off the ground, but it's 70 feet down. So...
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Miller? We certainly appreciate that, and Mr. Smith will be getting with you and talking to you about it. Go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. Now, Mr. Superintendent, item six, presentation.
Yes, I'd like to call Mr. David Hitt, principal at Waycross Middle up. And while he's coming up, he doesn't know I'm doing this, but you know, the challenges of COVID and all the craziness that's going on in our school district, last Friday afternoon about 5 o'clock, I was riding by Waycross Middle School, and I saw Mr. Hitt at the end of the hallway, one of the hallways where the fenced-in area is, and he was on one of the mop...
Sambonys.
Sambonys, whatever it is that mops the floors, on a Friday afternoon at 5 o'clock. And I thought something may have been wrong, so I went over and checked on him, and he said, "No." He said, "Every two weeks, he and Mr. Washington, who's over here as well, take time to clean the floors at Waycross Middle." So he did not want any recognition for that, but I think at the same time, it just shows the commitment he has to our school district. And Mr. Hitt, I just thank you for that.
Retirees, I see a lot of dear friends over there. Congratulations. I am very jealous and wish you the best of luck. I'm working hard to get there. This month's classified Golden Achievement Award recipient, Mr. Eddie Devlin, is Waycross Middle. Mr. Devlin is a classroom paraprofessional and title only. In reality, he is our go-to person for so many things. Eddie drives a bus for GEISA, for our athletic teams, for our field trips, and quite often for our transportation director when they are in a pinch. Eddie has led a science classroom instructional when we had a teacher out for long-term health issues and subs could not be found during the COVID era. Eddie is a very quiet professional who avoids the limelight, but is at work every day giving 100% to our students and staff. He is a paraprofessional that all teachers want in their classroom. His calming demeanor, dependability, and work ethic make him a very valued leader in our school. There is no doubt that this month's recipient of the Golden Achievement Award, Mr. Eddie Devlin, truly exemplifies what it means to be a Waycross Middle Bulldog. He is a very caring person who loves his job, our school community, and continues to be a key asset to the Waycross Middle family. Thank you, Eddie. I've kind of been deceitful with the other person. Told her I wanted her to bring some kids up to talk about the house tonight, Ron Clark Academy House. So I got her up here under a misconception, and I apologize, Jamie, but deal with it. This month's Golden Achievement Award recipient for the certified staff is Ms. Jamie Chaney at Waycross Middle. Ms. Chaney is a special education teacher and co-teaches sixth grade math with Randy Buck. She is also our head cheerleading coach, and that in and of itself makes any coach that coaches cheerleading a Teacher of the Year candidate. And she leads our Ron Clark Academy House system. In short, the RCA House system is a dynamic, exciting, and proven way to build a positive climate and culture for students and staff. Last year, Ms. Chaney came to me very frustrated with the large amount of discipline we were dealing with in our school and all the disconnected feeling we had due to the COVID issues. However, unlike most, she came to me with a solution as well and was willing to take the lead in its implementation, and her work has made an incredible difference in our school culture and climate. Moreover, she has done this work while doing an incredible job in the classroom and working with all students, gifted, sped Gen Ed 6 through 8. She's very well respected by the staff and faculty, loved by all students, and is a valuable teacher, leader in our building. There's no doubt that Jamie truly exemplifies what it means to be a Bulldog. She's a caring person who loves her job and our community, and we would be lost without her. Thank you, Jamie.
I think the item B is the Georgia Young Authors, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes. Tonight, we have our system leader. All right. So they need...
Okay. They're right there, starting with right where your left hand is. Yes. The Ware County Board of Education is proud to recognize the following students for their performance in the Young Georgia Authors Contest, and this is a writing contest that's held statewide for students who are in kindergarten through 12th grade. These students have been selected as both their school-level, grade-level winner, and the district-level, grade-level winner. And four of them actually went on to compete in the regional level, the Okefenokee Risa level of the competition, and we even had one person who is an honorable mention at the state level. So we are very excited and proud of these students, and we really appreciate their teachers and their principals giving them a platform for sharing their writing with others. May's a very busy month, so unfortunately, all of our winners could not be here with us tonight. They're involved with other school activities this evening, but we're going to call each winner's name anyway for the benefit of the public that are listening in. For those who are present, please come to the front of the room, speak with Mr. Smith. He'll give you your certificate. We'll take a quick photo, and then you can return to your seat once you've had your photo made. Audience, if you will, please hold your applause until all of our winners have been announced. We're going to start off with our kindergarten grade-level winner, Ms. Hannah Scott from Wearsboro Elementary. That's... I'm sorry. I told her mama, and so she's... that's always what comes out of my mouth. I even wrote it down here. I am so sorry. Scarlett Scott from Wearsboro Elementary. The title of her writing was "I Love Montana," and she is a school and district-level winner. All right. You ready, Scarlett? Oh, look at that smile. Got it. Thank you. Our first-grade winner is Jevan Franks. He's from Center Elementary. His writing was entitled "How Elf Saved Christmas," and he is a school-level, district-level, and Okefenokee Risa winner. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Next, we have our second-grade representative, Malika Malabannon from Memorial Drive Elementary. The title of his writing was "Plants." It was a nonfiction piece, very informative, and he is a school-level and district-level winner. Our third-grade winner is Ms. Ally Robertson from Ruskin Elementary. The title of her composition was "Leila and June," and she is a school and district-level winner. Our fourth-grade winner is Kate Bishop. She's from Williams Heights Elementary, and the title of her writing was "The Crazy Adventure with Santa and Mrs. Claus." Kate is a school, district, Okefenokee Risa winner, and our honorable mention at the state level. Our fifth-grade winner was Azian Smith from Ruskin Elementary. The title of her composition was "Behind the Door," and Azian is a school and district-level winner. Our sixth-grade winner is Abigail Waters. She's involved with a school activity at Waycross Middle tonight, but the title of her writing was "Glacier," and she is a school, district, and Okefenokee Risa winner. Our seventh-grade nominee is Elizabeth Blackrick from Waycross Middle. The title of hers was "Tale of the Furry Flamingo." That's a tongue twister. And she is a school and district winner. Elizabeth, are you here tonight? I don't think so. Okay. And also from Waycross Middle, Waycross Middle swept this year in the middle schools, so we're very proud of them. Elizabeth... I'm sorry. Riley Morris, and she is also busy with some school-level things tonight, but the title of her composition was "Never Given the Chance," and she is a school, district, and Okefenokee Risa winner. We did not have a ninth-grade entry, so we'll move on to 10th grade. Stella Calle, Ware High. The title of her composition is "Beauty in a Pile of Ruins," and she is a school and district winner. Thank you. Our 11th-grade winner is Evan Abernathy from the Harold Learning Center. He chose not to give his composition a title. Matter of fact, he put "untitled" on it, and he is a school and district-level winner. And our final person tonight we're going to recognize is Charles Wild from Ware County High School. The title of his composition was "Change," and Charles is a school and district-level winner. Would you please join me in a round of applause for all of our winners?
Congratulations to all the young people. Appreciate that.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I totally don't mind. You can get it signed, and I'll send it over if you want to do that. The rat team? You don't mind signing it, do you?
Now, we'll be moving on to the item C, which is our system-wide retirees. This is always a bittersweet time. We hate to see these people go, but we know they've all reached that point where they're ready to move on to new endeavors, and we appreciate all they have done for us over the years. As you can see, though, it's all about the kids. When the kids are through, everybody leaves. It's all for the kids. But anyway, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes. First, I thank all of you. I know most of you in this group and worked with you. I don't think any of you caught me, but I'm just trying to... Anyway, thank you so much for your dedication to the school district. Again, my coach, Jamie Smith, is our kid, because that's what it's all about. We wouldn't be here without our kids. And from no matter what your role was in this district, we are so thankful for all the years that you put in, which collectively was 1,071 years of experience.
Again, it's a busy time with May. All of our honorees could not be here, but we are going to take a moment to say their names and their years of service, just to honor everything that they've given to the Ware County Board of Education and to our students. So those that are here, as I call your name, will you come forward to be recognized? And audience, we will hold our applause until the end once again. Glenda C. Aldridge, 15.5 years, print shop, Central Office. Mary Alice Aldridge, 28 years, teacher, Ware County High School, actually retiring as an instructional coach. Pamela Barnhill, 26 years, teacher, Center Elementary. Yep. Please feel free to come grab a shot if you would like to.
Go stand behind me.
Ms. Barnhill. We're going to gather over here to take pictures. Barbara Blue, 28 years, nutrition, Daffodil Preschool. Boise Brown, 19 years, custodian, Ware County High School. Dora L. Cook, 36 years, parapro, Ware County Middle School. Marcia Davis, 20 years, parapro, Ruskin Elementary. Janice Deal, 36 years, teacher, Ware County High School. 36. Is that right? You count it every year. Lynn Downs, 33 years, teacher and instructional coach, Ware County High School. Ty Etheridge, 24 years, teacher, Ware County High School. Penny Hartley, 30 years, teacher, Williams Heights Elementary. Lee Hatfield, 33 years, teacher, Ware County High School. Lydia Hester, 20 years, parapro, Memorial Drive. Pamela Johnson, 19 and a half years, nutrition, Weycona. Janine Jordan, 12 years, nutrition, Williams Heights. Stephanie King, 33 years, assistant principal, Ware County Middle School. Margaret Kite, 31 and a half years, custodian, Memorial Drive. Eloise Lee, 11 years, custodian, Center Elementary School. Frank Lee, 10 years, custodian, Ruskin Elementary. Pamela P. Lee, 39 years, bus driver, Transportation. Yvonne Lott, 10 years, parapro, Ruskin Elementary. Donna H. McLean, 26 years, Director of Special Education, Central Office. Christina McGauley, 19.7 years, teacher, Daffodil. Sonya Mixon, 22 years, Title I Programs and Parent Engagement Coordinator, Central Office. Beverly Moy, 15 years, parapro, Weycona Elementary. Pamela J. Parrott, 28 years, speech-language pathologist, Center Elementary. Malene B. Perry, 23 and a half years, community outreach worker, Ware County High School. That one's next. Larry Pierce, 22 years, nutrition, Ware County High School. That's fine. We're good. Phyllis Poller, 36 years, teacher, Ware County High School. Betty Reese, 21 years, teacher, Ware County High School. Gloria M. Roberts, 30 years, teacher, Ruskin Elementary. Beth Sellers, 39 years, teacher, Wearsboro Elementary. David Shields, 36 years, teacher, Memorial Drive. Teresa Simmons, 30 years, teacher, Ware County High School. Linda C. Sermons, 20 years, teacher, Center Elementary. Karen Skinner, 33.5 years, nutrition, Ware County Middle School. Stacy Smallwood, 30 years, assistant principal, Weycona Elementary. Sandra W. Stone, 22 years, nutrition, Waycross Middle School. Gail Wade, 17 years, parapro, Weycona Elementary. John Weaver, 38 years, teacher, Weycona Elementary. And Charlene Wilson, 18 years, nutrition, Weycona. Is there anyone that I missed? Don't you raise your hand. I thought you were starting to raise your hand. To our retirees, we wish you much success and happiness in the future. Thank you for all of your service to the Ware County school system.
Yeah.
Yeah, miles over town.
Hey, in a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks after, they'll be lost, they'll be coming back. If there's any that withdraw.
Not down. I never did withdraw. Well, I kept them working.
You always have that thing, you gotta have something to do. The whole thing we do is.
Yeah.
There's certainly people that say, where have you been? You supposed to been out here five minutes ago. I've been driving through the man, I'm taking one of my wings.
All right. Well, we wish all those people well. They certainly earned it. We appreciate all their contributions in all areas. You can see there, they'll be hard to replace. But, you know, life has to go on. So we wish them the best. All right, moving on, Mr. Superintendent, item seven, we can just do that as a consent, those items?
Yes, sir. I recommend for approval, the report items, and some items, A, payroll and disbursements, B, financial report, and superintendent's report as presented.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second it.
Motion by Ms. Etheridge, second by Ms. Nelson, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight.
Yes, recommend for approval, the minutes from the April 25th work session and the April 26th board meeting.
Okay, you've had, you've heard the recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Tyre, second by Ms. Etheridge, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item nine.
Recommend for approval, the FY23 RISA contract, the membership fee remains the same as it has been. RISA provides educational services for improvement and instruction, as well as additional shared services, to funding sources, general funds.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tyre, second by Mr. Dees, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10 will also be a consent there.
Recommend for approval, the agreements with MOUs with Berry College, University of West Georgia, and College of Coastal Georgia.
Then you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, second by Mr. Dees, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 11.
Recommend for approval, the Bright From The Start Summer Transition Grant Agreement. The purpose of the grant is to coordinate, provide services for eligible children and their families served by the summer transition program for rising kindergarten students. The grant is funded with the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund through the CARES Act.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Etheridge, second by Mr. Dees, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 12.
Yes, recommend for approval, the amended 2223 System Calor for Ware County Schools. Two additional professional learning days have been added on September 2nd, 2022, not October 28th, 2022. The days will be used by school and system leaders to provide professional learning opportunities and staff planning time.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tyre, second by Mr. Dial, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 13.
Yes, recommend for approval, the 2223 Goals and Objectives, System Goals.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelson, second by Mr. Meadows, any discussion? I think you have a copy of this.
Yes, there's a hard copy, yeah.
Hard copy, so you should be, if you haven't looked over all of it, you can look over it now. All right, any more discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 14.
Recommend for approval, Ware County School System Strategic Plan, which includes the system statements, as well as the Georgia Vision Project Steps.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dial, second by Mr. Dees, any discussion?
There is a hard copy as well.
Yes, you have a hard copy of that. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 15.
Recommend for approval, the request from the Director of Transportation to pay rush truck center in Tipton, Georgia for repair work completed on buses 47 and 46. The amount for both buses is $17,665.64. It will be funded through the transportation budget. The work is being completed and both buses are now back in service.
Yeah, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dees, second by Mr. Tyre, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 16.
Recommend for approval, the request from Director of Special Projects and Director of Federal Programs to purchase Remind Plus at a cost of $27,000 for classroom to home communication needs. Through Title I Funds, the parent communication branch of LivingTree is going out of business in September. Many parents, teachers, or students are still using Remind services, so we feel it is the best placement for this critical communication component due to its familiar, I can't say that word, ease of use and current usage statistics and ability to provide district oversight.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, second by Mr. Dees, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 17.
Recommend for approval, the request from the Director of Federal Programs to purchase school agendas for Ware, Middle, and Ruskin. The purchase will be made from premier agendas and schoolmate for FY23. The cost will not exceed $5,000 and will be funded by Title I A.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Tyre, second by Ms. Etheridge, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 18.
Recommend for approval, the request from Ware County High School Band Director for the Golden Gator Band students to attend a performance trip to New York City on March 29th through April 2nd, 2023. The performance being on March 31st, the performance at the Intrepid Aircraft Carrier. The trip will be a great opportunity for students to expand their performance opportunities at a respectable venue. The students will also visit 911 Memorial Statue of Liberty and Intrepid Sea Air and Space Museum and a Broadway musical. The trip will be funded by students and parents with fundraisers and sponsors. Transportation will be via charter bus company.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Dial, second by Ms. Nelson, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 19.
Recommend for approval, the fundraiser at Daffodil, Wakeona, Ruskin, Ware, Middle, and Ware County High School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tyre, second by Mr. Dial, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 20.
Recommend for approval, the request for the use of the stadium, stadium parking lot, Bit Tanner Field, and Waycross Middle Schools outside athletic facility for the city of Waycross to host the July 4th fireworks event. This request is made with waiver fees. The request is made by Mark Hawkins.
Okay, we've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, second by Ms. Etheridge, any discussion? This is something we've been doing.
Yeah, years, years, yes, sir.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Brings us down to item 21, executive session. So at this time, we need to go into an executive session for the purpose of personnel and other pertinent matters. Do I have a motion to go into the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelson, second by Mr. Dial, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We will be adjourned to an executive session.
I just want to step right here.
Can we go in here?
Yeah. Go right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
We will be back. We will be back. Alright, we're back in session. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, we'll move on to item twenty-two, which is approve summer workers for maintenance.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from the Director of Facilities to hire the following summer worker for maintenance as listed here.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. D, second by Mr. Tyre. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All approved. Motion carries. Alright, item twenty-three, uh, we'll use that as a consent.
Recommend for approval, the new positions and sub-items A, B, and C as presented.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tyre, second by Mr. Dial. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty-four, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval of the personnel report and sub-items A, B, C, and D as presented.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, second by Mr. D. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Alright, that brings us down to the other, Mr. Superintendent.
I know you've got the, uh, with the, I know the FFA banquet's going on, we're gonna try to run over there real quick afterwards, the, uh. That's right, the, um, I think we mentioned the rifle team won the state championship again. Um, the baseball team had a great year, won region, made it to the final eight. Um, I know the track team is, are both boys and girls track, and the girls, um, won region, the boys have to get to sexual, but they've done a good job. Goff teams are state tournament Monday and Tuesday coming up at Okanagan, so a lot of things going on and, uh, just proud of our students. So graduation Saturday at nine o'clock, can't believe the year's almost over, so.
Anybody else?
Yes.
I just want to say it's been a good year. Thank you, thanks all the schools and the principals for all the things that they have done for me, as my family, during our time agreed, and just appreciation. Um, we will be there on Friday, oh, Saturday. Saturday morning.
And I'd like to say for those of us that went to the, uh, Wake Cross Middle banquet for FFA, no, yeah.
Yeah.
It was really, really well done. I think that's a great program. I'm so glad it's in both middle schools.
And though we did celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, every day is Teacher Appreciation Day. And we thank our teachers and all our staff members for a job well done with our children this year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just like to say thank you to all those teachers today that we recognize for all the years of service that they poured into the kids in this community. And as many of you are retired educators, we wish them the best in their next endeavor in life. And there's gonna be a lot of kids that's blessed to be able to go back and say, "That was my teacher one day." So thanks to all those teachers.
Right. Over a thousand years, what?
Actually, it was, thousand seventy-one.
Yes, we'd like to just say again, thanks to everyone for this outstanding year we've had. Uh, it has had some ups and we've had some downs. It's been another year of trials, but we're slowly working our way out of it and trying to get back to some kind of normalcy. We hope, uh, everyone has a safe and, uh, summer and, uh, enjoyable summer. And that goes for staff, students, parents, everybody, and we want them all to come back next year, because it'll be starting time before we know it. Uh, I'd like to just say a special thanks to the, uh, Police Department and Chief Cox and the Sheriff's Department and Chief, uh, James. James for the work they do and allowing their, uh, deputies and, uh, officers to go out and work our traffic, uh, situations at our schools, uh, every morning and afternoon. Uh, it makes a big difference in helping with traffic flow. Uh, I'd like to just say a special, special thanks to the sheriffs again, because this morning I came by the Wakeona, uh, crossing and it was, everything was blocked but Wakeona. They actually had two deputies there directing traffic. Uh, one was across the street on Wakeona, because you had people coming down ABC Avenue and stuff, and there, there's been a lot of accidents there. And then you had the one out on, uh, US one, and so they were doing an outstanding job. So we appreciate them and all these officers and what they do for us. Um, now it's, uh, you know, the sad part of our situation, we have lost some family members and some for, uh, former, uh, employees. And I'd like to recognize these families and, and offer our condolences and sympathies to them. Uh, the family and friends of Leah Dowling, a retired media specialist at Ware County High School. Vicky Parker, a teacher at Wake Cross Middle and the loss of her father, John Riggle. Bridgette White, a parent at center and the loss of her mother, Ida Viola Scott. Kayla Kilgore, a teacher at Ware Middle and the loss of her father, Gary Kilgore. Sean Yarborough, a maintenance staff member and the loss of his brother, Jimmy Ray Yarborough. Angela Waston, a teacher at Ware County High School and the loss of her uncle, Eddie Strickland. Laurie Littlefield, recently retired teacher and the loss of her husband, Dan Littlefield. Kayla Moody, teacher at Ware Middle and the loss of her grandfather, Eddie Barnes Senior. Tabitha Kendrell, teacher at Wakeona Elementary and the loss of her grandfather, Ezra Williams. Brian Morehouse, transportation employee and the loss of his mother, Charlotte Morehouse. Again, our sympathies and our thoughts go out to these family and, uh, for their loss. Okay, anything else?
Uh, just, you can't say.
Okay, just like to remind everyone that, uh, May twenty-fourth, uh, is election day. And we have an East Lost, uh, referendum on there and sure need to get everybody out to vote. We appreciate what we, this means to us, and it is very vital to the school system, allowing us to perform and provide many, many, uh, opportunities for our students. Okay, anything else? Nothing else then. I declare this meeting adjourned.
And y'all got the email on the Paul Beaton.